Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. We have.
Can I make another? Yeah, and just to make sure that one was to be an open session.
It is.
Okay.
It's going to be, if you will look on your.
Under the same agenda part, okay.
Item G.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, as far as the, um, there was, um, I want to make an adjustment to the agenda to separate item from the minutes from September the ninth.
Okay.
Um. Yes, please, and I want to make a correction to those minutes. So I make a motion to correct the minutes from what it was stated in there. I know that you guys always say that there is a recording, but I do not feel that the, that is sufficient for me. I want to have a correction under the record that I made a motion to approve the facade grant selection committee. They didn't apply for it. I never say anything about applicants, and I want to correct the record. So I make a motion for that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five oh one, and we will split that from the minutes. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. So we have a.
You have a public hearing?
We don't have any public hearings tonight. I thought I'd mentioned that earlier.
You didn't.
Approval of the minutes of the September nine, 2025, Minutes of Town Council with the wording that Mrs. Hicks had suggested.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Get a motion in a second, discussions?
Yeah, um, are we making a motion to change the minutes or just approve the minutes? What is?
To approve and change the wording, right?
Approve has changed.
I understand it was approved and change the wording in the minutes.
And what will the wording say?
Uh, the word said that, um, that they apply for, they apply for those. The word exactly said, have a copy in there of the minutes? It was under the town council bank. He said that they apply for it. Under my motion, I didn't say that under the, the meeting. I actually said that I wanted to make a motion to approve the facade grant selection committee.
Correct.
But in the comments, he actually said that they apply for the, I made a motion to approve the applicants to apply for the facade grant selection committee or something like that. I was reading the vocabulary. I will look it up again. I mean, you wrote the minutes right there. Tracy, can you give me the, the copy, what he said?
And it is on, under what now?
It's under the, um, the facade grant selection committee part.
I just don't know that, I mean, uh, that, that very well may, may be the case. I don't doubt that it is the case, but without seeing the recording to, to know that that's what was said or not said, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Well, I listened to the recording and you can always go back.
Yeah, I just, I'm saying, I haven't listened to the recording, so I just wouldn't, I don't feel informed to vote in favor of.
But that was the motion that was made.
Yeah, I'm just.
Tanya.
Right, we're having discussion, and I'm just, I'm explaining that I personally wouldn't be able to vote. I can't make an informed vote on this. So I'm just voting no, and it's not because I don't think you did that. I'm just saying I haven't seen the recording, so I wouldn't know.
So, um, you also, there were a couple of comments in there where I actually asked a couple of times if you were, um, if you actually did not know that your husband had applied for the facade grant, and you actually said in the meeting that you had no clue about that he had applied when you did do that. But anyway, that was part of the minutes too. I just want to correct the wording about where they applied, when they didn't apply. They, I wanted to, I made a motion during the minutes to approve the facade grant selection committee. I didn't make a motion to approve the applicants for the facade grant selection committee.
That's not shown in the minutes. There's six questions, Councilwoman Hackett, her husband had turned in an application for solid grant program this year. Bull and Bones, Mrs. Hackett was unaware of the application had been turned into the town, so.
Hold on.
I think it's in the middle of the page under E. It says, "Councilwoman Hicks made a motion to approve the following applicants to the facade grant."
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, she's actually talking about the grant applications, I think, aren't you?
No, I was just talking about when I made the motion. Hold on.
Well, I mean, didn't we discuss the members?
Should it be members instead of?
Yeah, but they.
To the grants.
Yeah, the members.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and see what it says in the recording.
It's on the screen, it's highlighted.
Okay, yeah, well, it says right there that, um, Councilwoman Hicks made a motion to approve the following applicants to the facade grant selection committee that were not applying for this position. I said that I wanted to approve the facade grant selection committee.
If you change, if you change the word from applicants to members, does that take care of it?
Yes, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we'll change it to members. All right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Nay.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, four oh one, thank you very much. And the bill list?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Bill list?
Oh, yeah, I've already asked my questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I can't hear you very well. I mean, yours are stopped up, I think.
No, I haven't turned my microphone on yet. There you go. After I've cautioned all these people.
Do you already?
Thank you.
Yes, why not really? Do you already do numbers B? Because I don't.
No, he didn't do the minutes for September sixteenth, yep.
No, no, not yet.
Okay, so the approval of minutes for September the sixteenth, 2025.
We can do that in the bill list together, can't we?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September sixteenth, 2025 in the bill list.
Second.
If you do that, I, well, that's fine, I'll just abstain to both of us.
Okay. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Very good. We do, we have no introductions and presentations tonight. Uh, next we go to citizens' comments, which allows citizens to, three minutes to come talk to council, questions or comments about things going on within the town. You come to the podium, name and address, and address your comments to the chair, Mr. Martin.
Moving slow, back problem. Stacy Martin, 1480 Turnberry Lane, Reiner. I appreciate being able to speak with you just briefly. Just attended the facade committee. Appreciate being able to have an opportunity to help with that. Uh, I wanted to just give an idea of something I thought might be good for the future. I know you're discussing the facade grant in the future. Being, I'm a local business owner, and buying local is becoming a bigger issue, especially for our small town. I like the idea for the future is buy local, shop local, eat local, cash mob. Instead of using monies toward a facade grant, perhaps maybe take this same amount of money and then create a, a town of Christiansburg dollar for temporary use. I was thinking about Small Business Saturday, that could be distributed. Businesses who are approved on the list could be used for businesses or for restaurants. And you can break this up, and I have an actual handout that I can give you guys. And each business would have a participation discount, like eighty percent, we would get reimbursed eighty percent of those turned in. Could you imagine thousands of people with a twenty-five-dollar cash dollar amount that they can go spend? You could also utilize it to have like twenty-five percent of those dollars go to age sixty-five and older people, maybe who are marginalized because of the economy. Maybe they can finally go shop local or eat out local. Twenty-five percent of them go to the Department of Social Services, and they can use them to, to, to underprivileged people who might need to use that as an opportunity to go shop local for even gifts. Twenty-five percent for people who are under age sixty-five, we don't leave them out. And the remainder of the dollars for some sort of random determination that, you know, you think would be going to program. So what I was looking at, if that was the case, if you had thirty thousand dollars spent, twenty-five was what the facade grant was, five thousand from participation discounts from local businesses like me, that'd be thirty thousand dollars. Divided by twenty-five, that'd be twelve hundred people that can actually be in circulation buying local. I think actually would get a lot of notoriety in the area. People, other governments would be looking at you guys, say, "Look, they're trying to really promote local businesses. Look what they're doing." Could attract a lot of attention. Who knows, might even bring new businesses to the area. So this is something that I was just throwing out there. You could also look for sponsors, some of the little local banks, perhaps. That could be the mayor's department, since he knows them.
Not anymore, they've all retired, just like me.
Yeah, but maybe get some sponsorships, maybe they throw some other dollars in, some local businesses like me, maybe they, here's extra dollars. That way we can kind of create a pool of money, and this could be a, a great program potentially to really get people out and about in the local economy. So I have a little handout to summarize that, you can give out to each other.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, of course. Short one.
Hi, Mr. Martin, is that similar to the program that, I think it was the town of Blacksburg did something similar during COVID time? Is that, is that something similar to?
Similar. Um, I do know that Mr. Donardo was part of that, and they would actually go to the bank, and they would buy their town dollars, and so the bank handled that. It could be done, something like that, if you can get participation through the bank or someone else like that. But in this program, it's a little different because those people had to actually have money to go buy. My idea was, well, if we're going to try to promote local business instead of doing facade grants, which has been a challenged program, uh, there's, there's some issues there, which we can discuss later. But this would allow people, especially those who don't have a large budget, maybe they're only on social security and that's all they've got, maybe they only get eight hundred dollars a month. If they were awarded, you know, a twenty-five-dollar voucher of sorts, maybe this is the only time they get to go out to eat, who knows?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Food for thought down the road. Anyone else? Mr. Wallace, glad to see your eyes are both open today.
They're both open today, yes, they are. Chris Wallace, thirteen seventy Rigby Street. I just attended the Central Business District Committee meeting, and, uh, it was, the other part of it, which was the facade grant committee meeting, wasn't in compliance with law yet again. And I got this back from Alan Earnhardt at the FOIA council. If the committee was appointed by town council to carry out a delegated function or advise the council, then the committee is a public body by definition and must comply with FOIA's meeting requirements, including public notice being open to the public unless closed according to a proper exemption and allowing recording by the public.
So?
They were not, it was not, the Central Business District Committee was advertised, but not the facade grant selection committee.
Okay.
They have to be advertised. And after the meeting, Miles said, "Well, we just did what the supervision told us to do. Someone should check with the supervision and figure out why they're instructing staff to break the law." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you know one, I will close the, uh, citizens' comments. Have there been any committees meeting in the last two weeks?
Not straight.
Facade grant met, but we have that later.
What?
Facade grant met, but we have that discussion later.
Okay. Other discussion in, uh, action by mayor and council, ordinance for a franchise agreement with Shintel, Shenador Cable TV LLC, Shintel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
Ju- just one question. They had asked for a twenty-year term, are you agreeable, is this for a twenty-year term? That's what was actually in, was revised, in the revised revision in the packet.
Yeah.
Yes.
They, they still don't have an exclusive, anyone else can come in.
Correct, correct.
But this is, they've asked for twenty years.
Can you explain a little bit of that contract to me, Randy? Is that the one where they pay us money every, or?
Basically, it's part, it's billed as part of their, their customer utility billing.
Okay.
And we're actually, you know, basically receive a consumer utility tax from them now.
Yeah. And what was the amount of that again?
I, I can't tell you that off the top of my head. It's, it's so much per bill.
And how much, how many years, for how many years was it before?
It was, I believe it was fifteen, possibly. Uh, maybe, I'd have to go back and check that.
I thought I read ten, it was ten years, and they were requesting to go twenty.
It's, the, the, the draft that was in the agreement, the packet previously was ten, and we revised it to twenty, basically to their request.
But now it's twenty-eight?
It's twenty in the packet now.
If we could prove it, it will be.
Okay, so in the package, right now it's twenty?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
And they, they already do have existing service here in town. I mean, they've got, they've got a lot of customers already.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Ordinance for code amendment request with the town of Christiansburg applicant to amend the Christiansburg Town Code, Chapter forty-two, um, forty-two dash eight conditional use permits, section forty-two dash nine lighting and minimum off-street parking, sections forty-two seventy-four, forty-two ninety-nine, forty-two one thirty-four, forty-two one sixty-one, forty-two one eighty-nine, forty-two two twenty-four, forty-two two twenty-five corner lots, sections forty-two thirty-three, forty-two sixty-eight, forty-two ninety-three, forty-two one twenty-eight, forty-two one fifty-five, forty-two one eighty-three, forty-two two eighteen, forty-two two forty-nine, forty-two eighty-one, forty-two dash three oh five, forty-two dash two twenty-six permitted uses of the Christiansburg Town Code. The request is alphabetized permitted uses and parking requirements to clarify corner lot furnages requirements and to clarify what reasonable conditions may be imposed on the conditional use permit, and that was approved, that was recommended seven oh by the planning commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Very good. Town council, reappointment of Rhonda Jackson to the New River Valley Housing Fund Oversight Board for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, any, any comments or questions?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Barber, appointment of town council member to the Central Business Committee for a term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, and I'd like to appoint Mrs. Cox to that, uh, committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You don't, you don't have to do that. That's my appointment. But I would like, I would like you all to approve Mrs. Cox to the Arts Committee that is normally appointed by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That's five oh one, thank you. Review the facade grant applications, is that Mrs. Bolt? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we had a Central Business District Committee meeting where we invited members of our facade grant selection committee to attend and discuss the rubric that they had sent us. Um, we previously sent all of the applications to town council for you all to be able to review preemptively. Um, we held a discussion, as you just heard, and, um, as a side note, I would like to take responsibility if there was any, um, misinformed notice. Uh, I thought that because we advertised the Central Business District Committee, that that would be okay in the conversation. So, um, if there is an issue, I will take responsibility for that. Um, but during our discussion, we had the selection committee allot a variety of the twenty-five thousand dollar budget to various, um, organizations, applicants that applied. Um, we considered the rubric, we considered, um, had meaningful conversations regarding ways we had done things in the past, changes that had been made this year. Um, one thing that I mentioned to, uh, in our Central Business District Committee meeting is that we have realized that, um, there are a lot of good things that have happened along the way with the facade grant program. There are a lot of things that have needed work along the way, and that continues to be true. So what we are doing to be proactive is holding a meeting in October, it's already scheduled, and I will make sure that the meeting requirements are met if, um, they were incorrect. And we are going to discuss in detail the process with our selection committee, so how things have worked in the past, um, how things haven't worked in the past. And our goal is to, as I've mentioned before, try and alleviate some of this gray area so that we can have, um, more concrete, um, wording and clarity for our applicants moving forward. So I'll just read through the risks, uh, list really quickly. We have David Rhodes Attorney and Law, um, and you can see the total score there between all of the applicant, or I'm sorry, all of the, uh, members of the selection committee. We've awarded them five thousand dollars for their project, Southview Development. Um, we have not made an award there. Um, they were disqualified from the process. The Orthodontist, um, was given five thousand dollars. UN Improved, thirty-five hundred. Bull and Bones, thirty-five hundred. Flora Accounting and Tax Service, thirty-five hundred. Prestige Pet Hotel, fifteen hundred. New River Engraving, unfortunately, also disqualified because they, um, began their work. McGrady and Purdue, fifteen hundred, and then Elite AC and Heating, fifteen hundred. So it would be our ask tonight, that town council would approve this based on Central Business District recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or have my team help answer any questions.
Yeah, I wanted to find out, because I still haven't received those applications that you mentioned before, that you said that there were changes after the day line. I do want to find out when was actually turning, the application was turning for the Prestige Pet Hotel, which was one of the ones that you had mentioned.
Yes.
I do understand that when I was looking at the application, it actually showed up, I think, the fourth of July, if I'm not wrong. I also want to make a comment, um, you were there as, as far as the last, um, facade grants, I was part of that for years, and then I have been watching the program for many, many years, and even before you were part of it.
Mm-hmm.
But I feel like in a lot of places, this facade grant can actually hurt the town a lot more than actually can make it be a good thing because of some of the things that have been changing over the years. Where even just last year, I was just listening over there to whatever for a minute or two, and where you're talking about Bull and Bones, where they're asking for something on the side of the building, yeah, that was never approved before, and that never came to town council. On the top of that, I find it like, you know, it was always told that the facade grant is always the front of the business, the front of the facade, and it's typically the front, and that's what it has been over the years. Not to mention the fact that, you know, ID, uh, when I was reviewing that application you sent, we received the one from Robert Hackett, which they were, it was kind of interesting too, because that was kind of like, I feel it was really a like when Tanya Hackett came over here and told us that she had no clue that the application had been turned in by her husband, but she was asking the Koya council about that application her husband turned in like weeks before this. And so I just feel like that's just not very being honest to the town, and that, that's just being not honest at all. And so, and then for the side of the building, going back to Route A, Donna's didn't get no money before. Electric supply, they asked for money for the size of the building, the back of the building. We didn't give them that money in the past because it was on the side of the building. And so when you're making these changes like that, and all of a sudden it's just to help what it feels like possibly the changes to this one business, it's just not fair.
I'm sorry, are you insinuating that we made changes to only benefit one business?
I'm just saying that it looks like that.
Well, I would respectfully remind town council that our decisions were made before we had any applications. So there was no way that we were making decisions with applicants in mind because we aren't future readers, and we don't know who was going to apply. So we made our decisions based off of staff recommendations and conversations with the Central Business District Committee meeting. Um, as far as the dates for the applicants, I'm going to try and answer all your questions, but there was a lot to unpack in there. Um, so the New River Engraving submitted on June thirtieth, um, and their update was submitted on seven seven, so July seventh. Prestige submitted on June thirtieth, and their update was seven eight. Bull and Bones submitted on June thirtieth, and their update was eight thirteen.
Which it was a name change, right? For Bull and Bones, it was only the name.
Correct.
And then what my understanding was that the reason why some of these applications had changed, I spoken, uh, with this, and so one of the comments was that, yeah, they, they had said that they turning the application from like last year, for example, the pay company, they turning something from last year, and then I did hear that Miles had mentioned to them, "Well, maybe you just don't put the sign in there." And then that was considered like the change, I guess, that's what you're mentioning? Is that what you're saying, that it was resubmitted?
That it was what, sorry, was the last?
Resubmitted because Miles had asked them to take away the signage, is that correct?
It was resubmitted?
Can I, can I get Miles to respond to that?
Sure, Miles, come on up.
Yes, so based on, uh, their original application, when the issue was brought up, they were allowed to edit and resubmit their application. Yeah.
And who made those decisions?
Which decision? In order to allow them to?
Yeah.
Miles and I did.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve as the facade grant committee recommended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. We've had some discussion, any other discussion?
Um, unless, uh, we separate Bull and Bones, I am going to abstain from this entire approval, but if we want to separate Bull and Bones, I'm happy to make a vote on the other applicants and abstain from Bull and Bones.
Remind your?
So I'll amend my motion to, uh, approve all Bull and Bones, and we will do Bull and Bones as a separate one.
Mrs. Cox, is that all with you?
My second.
Thank you very much.
Here is the other change too. If you're going to separate the, I mean-
Well, I think there's some direct implement, implications from you toward another council member.
No, I wasn't actually abstaining.
I've got the floor. Why she is separating that in order to be able to abstain from only one and not from the whole program.
Well, I also, I'm doing businesses with Mr. David Rhodes, Attorney at Law, so I don't feel like I also need to, you know, that would look really bad for me.
Okay, so, so can we vote? Madam Clerk, please.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Nay.
Was that an a or a no?
Nay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Think we're four to two. Uh, now, could we call for the vote on Bull and Bones?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Nay.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Abstain.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
So it's three, two, and one. That one passes also. Thank you very much. Town Council Decision on Requesting Grant Extension from Appalachian Regional Commission Gathering Space Grant. So I believe we want to request a grant extension.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good motion in a second, in discussion. Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I'd like to know why we're extending it. I mean-
Well, it's, go ahead, come on, Rhonda.
Good evening. Um, I had a request, um, after all of this discussion about the farmer's market from DHCD saying that-
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Um, I had a request from DHCD after all of this discussion has happened with the farmer's market. Um, and they said that our deadline, um, to be able to extend the grant funding that we received, um, we would need to turn in, um, a letter requesting that by October first. If-
I'm sorry, October?
October first.
First?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so it's not to say that we have to continue with the project. You're not having to make that decision tonight. It's just whether or not you're permitting an extension letter in case you do decide you do want to move that direction with that project. Um, it, it doesn't tie us to anything.
I would really like to know what the, um, what is it that the mayor actually knows that we don't know, that you had kind of made a comment the last time? Uh, because to me-
I'll be glad, but that will be in a closed session that had, that has to deal with potential purchase of land. And until that point-
Will that be before October first? Because I, I don't want-
Well, it won't be before our next-
It won't be before our next meeting. I'm still waiting on the person I'm dealing with to give me the facts and figures that he's looking for.
Well, that is still a million dollars that we're probably going to be spending on a project like this, and I have no information. So I'm going to be voting on this because of that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So let me just, to be clear what I would be voting on. This particular ask is just for an extension of funds that were already awarded to the town.
Yes.
And doesn't obligate us to anything more than we were already obligated for.
That's correct, yes.
That's basically true. I think it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar grant, and it's basically a, for lack of a better word, it's a facade, or it's a, 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 a farmer's market booth type thing. Uh, we have spent fifteen thousand dollars so far, so if we don't go forward with that program, at some point, we will have to reimburse the town.
But, but you're, but you're saying we won't meet before the extension's up, so we won't have an opportunity to do-
The extension is up in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, that's what I need to know. How, how long is the extension?
Yes, so we would request a year.
Okay.
That's generally what has been done in the past.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
So the extension, the letter is due on October first. The extension would be till next year.
I knew I was missing something. Thank you.
Well, that means that we're not going to continue to pay any money on design, correct?
Correct. That, that's, that's paused at the moment. Well-
Thank you very much. So as long as it's paused for now, as far as the spending, I'm okay. I'm actually voting on that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Very good. Under the, uh, Section G, which we had moved from a closed session, it's to discuss the, uh, the procedures and the guidelines and what we're looking for in getting this started on this Town Manager Search Review. And I have some, some notes here in, in discussion with our HR Director. Uh, she said HR best practice is to notify unsuccessful candidates as soon as possible if they do not qualify and provide status updates throughout the process for qualified candidates. These candidates applied between mid-July and mid-August, one to two months ago. Fourteen of the thirty candidates did not meet the following requirements, required qualifications as listed in the job posting. Five years minimum of progressive executive leadership experience in government, experience with budgeting, municipal finance, and strategic planning. So there were fourteen of the thirty applicants did not meet any of the base qualifications.
I actually like what Tanya Hackett had sent in an email as far as us having the opportunity to review the thirty applicants. And, you know, come out to Town Council. You, the last time that we were in the meeting, you actually mentioned that we had until the end of October to look at those applications. So I don't feel like-
We're going to set, we're going to set the timeline tonight. I've got a recommendation for a timeline.
But you mentioned to me, so I'm listening.
I've mentioned a lot of things to a lot of people, Ms. Hicks. I've got to get, we, our job as this current Town Council is to fill the manager vacancy, and that's what we're going to do. So what we are suggesting, what we are suggesting is that between now and October the fourteenth, which is five weeks, that you reserve, that you can review all of the applications, all thirty of the applications, all sixteen of the applications, or all ten of the applications that you want to, that you want to review. We will meet again on the fourteenth, and we will decide at that point, whom, if any, and how many we're going to interview. We will have a close, we will try to schedule a October twenty-second work session, which is a mid, midweek work session, to do those interviews, and hopefully we will have a, an answer or a decision by the meeting of October the twenty-eighth.
I, I guess here we are again with the, with the timeline. I do follow timelines, and I want to look at my schedule and make sure that, you know, everybody's schedule works with everything else. I do find it interesting now that we're into the middle of October, the end of October still, which obviously, you know, we still don't have to make that decision by the end of October. But once again, we're being pushed. November the fourth is election time, and we may have four new members sitting in here. It may be three new Town Council members, it may be a new mayor, it may be the same people, well, actually not the same people, because we got, you know, but anyway, so there may be a lot of changes, and I feel like having to work with someone that some of the council members, and I may not, you know, the new people and the current people may not, you know, feel okay working with. I think-
And I see your point. But early on, when Mr. Wingfield announced his resignation, it was the consensus of this council that we as this council would fill that vacancy. And I don't know that that's changed any from the majority of the, of the council discussion.
Many people in here have changed their ideas, and even you just changed the timeline too, from going to the end of October to look at those thirty applications to the middle of October. So, I mean, anybody can change their mind as well, as that goes through.
I gave you, and I know that you and Mrs. Bowman, I think it said you wanted to see all thirty applications. They can be viewed here in Town Hall. You have five, you know, there's five weeks to come in and, and, and review those applications. We're not all going to sit down and review the same, the applications. If two people want to come in next week and look at the sixteen, or the ten, or whatever, then we can do that.
I believe Mrs. Bowman is having surgery, heart surgery. Aren't you, Mrs. Bowman?
I am.
It's next weekend?
No, I've got a few days. I can, I can work out time.
Okay, so if you would contact Mrs. Niles, just-
Thank you.
It would work out fine. Very good. All right, so I would-
I, I'm in agreement with the timeline.
I am as well. I think that we are, our applicants have been waiting patiently, and we will lose, um, the ability to interview and offer the position to, to, to some applicants, um, if we continue to wait. I also remember being a new council member, and our first order of business being to appoint the town manager. And as a new council member, I know that that was really difficult for me, coming in with a minimum understanding of what that person needed to deliver to the role. So I think if you had, especially if we had an all-new council, it would be a really difficult uh, responsibility to give them to appoint a new town manager as their first order of business without any experience in the role. And I think everybody here is very qualified to appoint this position.
I think Mr. Randy was here for almost a year doing those, that position, right before you were hired for that. And I don't understand, you, you made a comment, Tanya, that, um, that you had to make that decision of appointing the manager for the town, but Randy's been the manager for years now.
But they're asked to vote. I remember I've had several council members that have come on board and have not felt comfortable with that decision, so.
I mean, even Kim said it when she came on board. I mean, she addressed that as her first order of business when she was new to the council. I mean, we've all had that experience, I think. There's nothing wrong with that.
But here is the thing, Tanya, the, that position will be filled in for one month, actually before, um, Town Council takes office.
I think the recommendation-
Right, would be to appoint through the end of next year.
To the end of next year.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. So that is not the same thing as before, because before you had the chance to make that decision at the beginning of your council. It wasn't towards the first year of your council, so.
Very good. Do I have a motion in a second? Sam, do you have anything to say?
No, sir.
Yeah, I make a motion we approve those dates.
Second.
Motion in a second.
That doesn't mean that we're going to be, you know, making a decision on October fourteenth. That you, I mean, on the twenty-second. That can just be just-
That's the, that's when we decide, we will decide, hopefully on the fourteenth, how many people we would like to interview, and we would like to interview them at the work session on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
So we have to give time for scheduling, and some of them we can probably do as online interviews or whatever that's called, where you see them on TV.
Based on.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cox?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Bless you. Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Six oh.
Aye.
Just moving right along here. All righty, uh, staff reports, Town Manager?
Rocking Main is this, uh, coming Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from five to nine PM, and that's, uh, on the East Main Street side this side, this time. Uh, the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet is Saturday, September twenty-seventh at six PM. At the end of Virginia Tech, uh, we have eight tickets. If you haven't already, let me know. Uh, let me know the number of tickets you might need. Also, the New River Valley Agency on Aging is hosting a commemorative fiftieth anniversary event at the Recreation Center, September twenty-sixth. The event begins at nine forty-five with Senator Tim Kean, uh, in attendance at ten o'clock. The Aquatic Center is holding Pumpkin Splash on Friday, October third, from five thirty to eight PM. The Police Department Fall Festival is Saturday, October fourth, from eleven AM to three PM at Uptown Christiansburg Mall. The Tony Huddleston Trout Rodeo is Saturday, October fourth, from two to four a, uh, PM at Isaac Walton Pond. The Fire Prevention Night will be October seventh, from six to eight, and we're going to be doing that in lieu of the Fire Prevention Parade. And also, we'd like to take a picture of Town Council afterwards, uh, homepage. Also, I'll mention the VML Conference is October twelfth through the fourteenth. That's Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday at the Hotel Runout.
And we will still meet the night of the fourteenth?
Yes, and we're still planning on meeting the night of the fourteenth.
Thank you. Very good. Town Attorney, Mr., Mr. Broughton?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any other town staff? Council reports, Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Ms. Hicks?
I want to make another comment about Mrs. Flintham, um, with the agency on aging. Uh, agency on aging is probably one of the best things I have been involved with Town Council. Is one of very respected group of people, and is just a really, really amazing group to work with. Um, Mrs. Deanna Flintham, she was actually a volunteer, um, over there for many, many years, but she dedicated herself for the last fourteen years on doing a lot of the counseling for budgeting for, um, people through the agency. She also was a volunteer to the VICAP Councilor, and obviously she was a member of the Board of Directors for Montgomery County, uh, for, for years. And so, um, she will really be missed. I volunteered with this woman for many, 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 many different occasions, and um, she was just really amazing, so she will definitely be missed.
Thank you. Ms. Hackett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Bowman?
Yeah, I would just add to what, um, Councilwoman Hicks said, that, um, in addition to all of that service, she also saved um, elderly and disabled people hundreds of thousands, even into the billions of dollars over the years, uh, helping them to choose insurance and things like that. So she really was a valued person in our community and will be missed.
Deanna, have we left you speechless yet, or is there anything you'd like to?
Um, I don't have a report, because I just got here, but I would like to, um, give a shout out to our Public Works Department for their commendable service at, uh, maintaining our pet waste stations, especially on Park Street and East Main. Um, they're doing a great job, and I just wanted to let them know.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before council?
Mr. Mayor, let me just ask, the, uh, October fifteenth work session, do you have any top, do you have any-
October twenty-second.
So, well, normally the, it's the third.
I don't care what normally it is, Randy. We're going to do-
Do you want to cancel the meeting? Do you want to cancel the one on the fifteenth?
Yes, because we're meeting on the fourteenth. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Oh, man.